This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the San Antonio City Council Special Meeting for Monday, July 15. We have a few transfers tonight for immediate consideration. The reason that we can do that is because the MGL allows us to do so, and the Vice President is going to read the law, so they'll be able to.
Roll call.
We have, yeah, roll call. Barbara.
Dan, here, Salem Derby.
President.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kozinski, Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley, Tamara Smith, Cam, JT Pearl.
Here. Here.
Mr. Vice President?
So these are in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 33B, which allows for end of the year transfers to be made within the first 15 business days of July to make budgets whole for the end of the fiscal year. In part, the MGL reads as follows, "No transfer shall be made of any amount appropriated for the use of any city department to the appropriation for any other department except by a two-third vote of the City Council on recommendation of the mayor and with a written approval of the amount of the transfer by the department having control of the appropriation from which the transfer is proposed to be made."
Thank you, Vice President. I will pass it to Councilor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what we have is an interdepartmental transfer of $128,185. That's being transferred from Police Incentive, $35,000, and the remaining $92,185 is coming from the Reserve Fund. That's going to be going to Computer Part. I'm just going to read these through so that we're clear what's going on. Computer Part-Time Clerical Salary, $10,080. Building Operations Equipment Repair and Maintenance, $62,140. Dispatch Personnel Services, $16,600. Dispatch Overtime, $18,400. Building Inspection, Gas Plumbing Wire, $4,800. Building Inspection, Temporary Position, $3,050. Motor Repairs Salary, $195. Motor Repairs Overtime, $2,800. Motor Repairs OOC, $120. Motor Repairs Uniform Allowance, $100. Brookside Cemetery Salary, $4,015. School Medicare, $5,620. Medicare Tax, $265. So Mayor, I don't know if there's anything in particular you'd like to expand on any of this, you know, what these are for, but yeah.
Yeah, they're basically, at the end of the fiscal year, there are gaps on some line items. We want to make them full because they affect the bottom line and in accordance and following the budget that I presented a year ago. So I will say there were some unexpected costs that came up in different line items that didn't associate. We try to do the best we can with trends, but also we have, that all said, we've got some training and started that with each individual department on how to better follow those trends and get in line more with the budget. In large part, one, it's what we said we would spend, and two, helps us a great deal with what's actually. You know, we're looking at $93,000 transfer out of Reserve. That leaves us with $93,815 left, which is fine. The Reserve is something, it's built just for this reason. But we want to use, we want to use this middle as leverage, stocks in the tank, and follow our line item. So in the coming year or the next budget, there will be some changes. Along this, we did have some switching around around the schools, the existing schools that we hopefully have a signed agreement in a couple of months on that. We didn't anticipate besides heating and some pipe breaking vandalism that we just had to address if that comes out of the building.
I know we have some department heads here, and I will recommend Councilor Peak. If we can go one by one, unless the department head or representative from that department to explain why we need to be this transfer.
Yes, I.
At least you know the answer.
I know, so that's fine. But before I just, before we got into where it's being transferred to, the one thing is, other than the Reserve Fund, I do see that $35,000 is coming out of the Police Incentive. Was that, did we not use all the Police Incentive funds that we budgeted for?
We did.
Okay. Good enough. Okay, well then let's start with Computer Part-Time.
Yes, this is to supplement the salary of Eleanor Cattelli, who's our project manager and has been within the entire IT department. She continues to be part-time, she goes 20 hours a week, and she works like real full-time people. The reality is that she is incredible to have her in the office, but having her has also generated more work for all of us as we are managing more and more projects. So this is to supplement that position.
Okay, and Building Ops.
Before we keep moving, any councilor have any questions about this one? Councilor Denham?
Just a quick question. I'm curious, it's $10,000, and so why waiting out? Like, here we are at the last meeting, why didn't you come to council sooner than that so that we could kind of work on?
Well, you got me there. I think it was my error when it was authorized to increase in hours. I forgot that that's a cost. I just asked for the authorization and the logic of why we needed that, and I never put down, okay, this is going to cost the department.
Any other councilor? Councilor Peak?
Okay, Building Ops, the mayor just briefly described. Greg, if there's anything there you want to add on to?
Oh, Greg, I see. The detail too, in case Greg couldn't make it. So Greg, I have the detailed report that we take.
Yeah, I'm here. If I could just offer, I mean, we encountered a lot of issues with the building and the Honeywell work we did last year that were not part of the work, but needed to be replaced for the work to proceed. So there was quite a bit of expense there that we encountered and just trying to be a little more proactive in taking care of the HVAC systems between City Hall and the safety complex.
Does anyone have any questions? Councilor Denham?
Thanks for this. Similar question. If I'm looking at the correct thing that you're showing, right? You know, I'm showing a gap in the last bill that should come in, even in March. So same question, why here we are in June, why not sooner, earlier to address this gap?
Well, we had a number of appropriations that needed to go through a few months ago, and this, the funding we needed to shore up Building Ops for the rest of the year somehow just didn't make it on. I don't know if it was my oversight or what happened, but it didn't, it didn't get through with the others earlier in this, earlier this year.
And are there any additional, like late fees or anything that is incurred because of?
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Councilor Smith?
You know, you had said that vandalism was part of the cost that had to be part of this building cost. Can you just, what was the remediation for vandalism?
We just further secured the buildings. There wasn't really damage inside. Two, I mean, Greg can, I mean, it wasn't damage, a lot of damage inside that needed to be corrected, but just making sure windows are boarded up and they got a little creative about how to get into those buildings. So that was a part of it, and I would also say, Mr. Greg, speaking to the extra money from the HVAC, you know, the seeing or thinking about secondary consequences of putting in new equipment and not realizing that we couldn't use that energy-saving contract and that money to fix those things, because it wasn't just good under the actual contract, was less important, you know, on the, yeah.
Any other councilor? Councilor Sarah?
I mean, there's already been no question for a lot of these, but obviously this, this number sticks out the most. But obviously, building maintenance is a costly affair. So are we in the hole somewhere, or is, did you have money somewhere else to pay for this? And we're making, just making the budget whole by filling that back in?
Greg?
So we are, what we're, we're making the budget whole by, by filling it back in with the funding we're looking, we're seeking tonight.
And where's the money? I mean, that's a more procedural question, just to educate myself. So what, where, when you're, when you're in a deficit, you need $60,000 to a building maintenance that's over budget. Where are you, where's the money coming from for that?
Well, in this instance, Hadel decided to transfer it from the available funding that was not used for Police Incentive, is my understanding.
Mayor?
Yeah, and, um, correct, Director Nodlin, but during the course of the year, there is shifting where a line starts to go into deficit or we get a big expense for any given line item, and there's another line item, like electricity, that we haven't paid and spent down. So the $60,000 or $5,000 or $500 will be shifted from that line item to another. And then at the end, you still have to look at the gap, the backfilling of it. So now electricity is, is in the deficit at the end of the fiscal year because we use some for the projects here. Our corrective action to that, not that this in particular is a new phenomenon, is to actually restructure line items and have sub-line items. So we're watching quarterly, we're watching quarterly what's getting spent and what's getting not spent. As a result, and Greg and I talked about this earlier today and last week, I do think that that will be resulting in some additional appropriations that come before you, especially around utilities, and we do the best we can and just find a great contact. That's a great, as well as additional building materials and highway to supplement the projects that are going on, you know, down. So we kind of gauge it right up the middle and see what it does. So already we know that asphalt has tripled in price, and we did not know that until we did the budget. So kind of a switch from moving money within a department and making whole at the end of the year to a system where, based on the quarterly reports that you guys got, that you're actually looking at the true line item spending, and in a way will know when an appropriation might be coming your way or we can refer you to because that line of the preceding three months or whatnot has gone down, and we're, we're close to spending it out.
Thank you. Any other councilors? I do have a few comments. The first one is, because I sat down with Hadel before coming to this meeting, this appropriation for the, for DPW is not coming for the Police Incentive, it's coming from the Reserve Funds.
Yes.
That's, that's the first one. And the second one is, I'm a little concerned that we knew, I would say we, as a city, knew that we're short since March. March 21st, that we're going to be short, and now July 15, and we have to be a little bit more proactive, because the consequences could be really bad for the community if we didn't have those, those funds, right? If we didn't have the reserve funds or any other funds, that will be hitting the tax rate in our community, and that would be really bad for, for us. So I, I would recommend to be a little bit more proactive next time, and I hope. Councilor Peak?
Yeah, and just one thing I want to sort of clear up, because I'm hearing two different expenses that have incurred Building Ops. One is the vandalism, the other is the HVAC stuff. But I swear we talked about the HVAC stuff in finance. I swear that was, that was one of our free cash appropriations, was covered that. So the vandalism's a different thing. I understand they're hitting the same budget, so it doesn't really matter. Like, the point is, a bunch of stuff happened, and now it's over. I'm just, for a narrative perspective, I thought we already addressed the HVAC stuff in, like, the fact that there was bad work and it had, there had to be some additional stuff that came up. Am I crazy? Like, I really remember this, like. So I'm just trying to understand, what, is this different HVAC stuff, or, I guess, I thought we already covered that?
Mayor?
It's additional HVAC stuff that are items that we, because of, you know, when we present the budget, you know, the bottom line, if you look at the bottom line of your budget and know that's what you have to spend, and then moving it up and down and all around, just honestly, you lose track of it. Like, so where did you shift to do this or that or whatnot? And then all of a sudden, we get close to the end of the year, and these are the gaps. So I took a little bit of it. I think the approach of the bottom line budget is is the goal is the, you know, kind of the ultimate at the end of the year, but the reality is, shifting the money to in and out of the different line items in that department, we simply lose track. It's not an excuse, it's not an explanation, it's just a fact, and it's one of the reasons why we'll be tracking, we'll go back to the beginning of, I mean, it's not that much. We'll, we'll go back to July and build a spreadsheet that tracks it in real time by line item and not just by some department, like Highway, Wastewater, and whatnot. So we know where we are, and, and we did. We definitely, different parts of the fiscal year, you know, didn't know exactly where we stood as far as cash in relation, one, cash. Two, where we were in any given department, some departments were, so, any given department regards to bottom line and what had actually spent and what had been switched. It was very difficult to track those dollars. I say, a correction, you know, one of the big lessons or corrections you'll see in the fiscal '25 budget is the breaking out into sub-lines to get ready for fiscal year '26, where those sub-lines will actually be detailed in the new budget. So we have to use the same categories we presented the budget with, but we're breaking it down on a side spreadsheet to get that detail and in a timely manner. So this is, that, yes, there's free cash, and we need to back up those requests with a little more with line-by-line detail. So when these line items become a gap, we can specifically say, this is what we asked, this is what we spent for, and honestly, this is what we missed. I mean, that's just the truth of it. You know, there's not a lot of technical. This is not, I would just end with, this is not a local match, this is not because of there were unexpected repairs, but this isn't because of an unexpected capital expense. This is general fund operating budget and accounts we did not watch closely enough, but we watched the bottom line instead. Point taken of all the councilors.
And if I recall, well, I think the appropriation by then was $12,000. I think so. And I just want to make another clarification is when Mr. Nodman said that our employee made the decision of using that money, Hadel, for the reserve account to pay for this or the Police Incentive. I think Hadel just recommended to the mayor, we should be using.
Some mayor.
It's, it's.
Yeah. Up and down on the budget, absolutely. I mean, it's, you know, it's a conversation between the department head and myself of how we're managing that budget and every line. And then, you know, I do, I ask Hadel for a number of options that are legal, and, but it's me that needs to balance those big pots of money and land the budget. So yes, at the end, DPW is, is an octopus of a department overall, and we just should have been more on like we always, you know, with police or, yeah. There's other, other department budgets that are clear to follow.
Thank you. Any other councilor? Councilor Peak?
Okay, so we have two next from Dispatch. Cindy, do you want to talk about the Dispatch items?
Here we go. Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening, Brenda.
Okay, we're both here together.
Oh, okay. I was like, wait, how was that?
So, go ahead.
So the request for the $35,000 is due to not enough of money in my FY '24 grant from the state. I had hired three additional new dispatchers in April, as of April 1st. So I thought that was going to be able to cover it, which I ran out of money out of the grant, and it did not cover it. Completely.
Okay. Cindy, you want to add something?
Hi there. Well, we hired two dispatchers in the fall, three more in the spring. The grant was approved in March, and at that time, we thought, you know, that was going to cover us to the end of the fiscal year. And the appropriation request went in in April, so we didn't, we didn't file on dispatch because we thought the money would carry us, but it turned out we had higher overtime costs because of training all the new dispatchers, and we just didn't anticipate we would run over, but we did.
Good. Councilor Peak?
So just to confirm, the reason why the grant didn't cover as much as you thought was because the overtime costs associated with the training were higher than, than you anticipated that they would be?
Yes.
Any other councilor? I didn't see anyone. I just want to, for clarification again, the Police Incentive, the $35,000 that we're going to transfer, it will be covering those two lines, the dispatch services and dispatch overtime. If you do the math for both, it's going to be $35,000. Councilor Peak?
Okay, the next two we have are related to building inspection. I'm not sure who wants to speak to that.
Mayor?
Yeah, so we have a lot of gaps in staffing that department around the commissioner. Commissioner had a medical leave, we needed to bring in billing consultants, or we have a system of alternates. We, we brought in more alternates than we normally would because we had commercial, we had commercial, excuse me, we had commercial projects that needed to be looked at. We don't want to ever let those fees not be collected. And it didn't, we're paying salary and keeping our obligation to the commissioner who's out of medical leave, and then commissioner leaving. We knew we were probably going to run short. And, yeah, I mean, the, it's a reevaluate year. I'm a little un-iced over it. It's a reevaluate year for assessors, and we were under the gun to go through as many open permits as we had to get them done to capture that for new growths. So we did the best, we made a good chunk of it, but it came in a bust.
Any councilor have any questions? Councilor Derby?
So I guess I'm just curious, you know, where we are now with the building commissioner, and, and are we going to anticipate in, after this fiscal year, are we going to incur extra costs as well if we still don't have one in place, or, and are we angling towards that?
Yeah, so because of this gap, we have the position posted full-time with that intention to make that department whole. We have no applicants. We signed a professional service contract today with John Flag. And instead, a lot of what we're talking about now, taking that $20,000 out of the salary, saying, oh, we'll come back when we hopefully hire a building commissioner. We'll take that out as an expense separately. There's a little bit of money in those sorts of services, but that's a great example of we're coming back for very specifically under professional services and not piecemeal it. We have two other backup commissioners that can help out in a pinch plumbing and electric. But the commissioner itself, the person who signs off on all of that, will be professional services John Flag, you know, at least for the next three months, and we're hoping to solve that problem. So the request for money will come sooner, but for the, basically the same reason as what we're coming to you guys later, to close out the bumps. Thank you.
Councilor Denham?
Yeah, just a quick question. Something I'm just trying to understand here. So the fiscal year, it's going to be the person signs off on gas, plumbing, and water?
Ultimately, they sign off on the complete project.
But someone else comes and inspects it, though, right?
For plumbing and electrical, yes.
Okay, great. So my question is, is the $4,800, my understanding, if I understand this correctly, it had to do with a rate change and how much they're paid. So when did we know that that rate change was going to be in place?
Midway through. Because our intent to do it in the beginning, and we honestly didn't get there. And there was some back and forth about historically paying them with an hourly rate and then additionally mileage, which is just confusing, and we'd rather just know that this is what they get per inspection rather than splitting it out, and so many inspectors didn't. So knew we were going to change it and kind of keep it all the same, but then we did not actually get to that until later in the fiscal year.
And I had said, I had one more question. So, because this is very enlightening for me to learn about all these various things. So in terms of the electrical, and this is just kind of a budgeting thing that's a little bit concerning. So, so if I understand, electrical, you know, we budget for, or we guess, right? I come and I do this inspection for this particular individual's, yeah, electrical need, and it's $50, and we kind of mark that, but then, oh, I have to come back again, and that's another $50, but we don't necessarily budget for the number of times that we go back, but we actually budget for the number, we don't budget for the number of visits, we budget based on the application. And so I'm trying to understand, how do we remedy that kind of in the future? So that we're not at the end of the year going, oh, we got to fill this?
So we increase the fees, all the permits across the board specifically to do a one-and-done fee. So you take out the application, the fee is $75, not $50. I'm making those numbers up. And while, like, solar is a great example, you've got a building commissioner who comes out to the site, the building structure, electrical, plumbing if needed, but the building inspector has to go back out, and sometimes more than once, depending on the, and, and what we're working through, especially after this year, with the uptick in residential solar, is that the consumer, the resident, the property owner, through their general contractors, comes once, pays, done. And we have now three post-COVID fiscal years to look at with the closing of '24, and we'll, we'll look at how that goes for a little bit of inflationary increase. And we feel okay about that estimate on, on revenue coming in, but this will be the first year that we have a new fee schedule. And feel okay, and Building Commissioner BJ, before she left. feel okay and and uh, building commissioner BJ before she left, uh, she was great in that she worked out the schedule of fees based on fees around us to make sure that we weren't burdensome or a lot more than communities around us. And she felt good that we were gonna be able to to cover the expenses. Um, but again, that is something that we are actually gonna see in, you know, I say real time, but quarterly. So, you know, we'll wrap up first quarter. We'll be able to see within a month of the end of the quarter or a week. Yeah, so we're trying to set time and cut it down. So the reports you had um, reflects like it'll clearly say until September. You know, then the next quarter and the idea would be by January, we have a financial trend um, of this year that we can track to revenue.
Any other concern? Go for a peek.
Uh, next four are related to motor repairs.
Greg?
Yep, I'm I'm still here. Um, yeah, we had, we had, um, I guess we just had some oversight in the budget there this year. I was kind of surprised to see that myself. We didn't have some calculations prop uh, correct and um, we spent a little more in there in overtime than um, than we had expected. Um, a lot of the overtime that the staff in motor repair works gets charged to different departments and um, this year was uh, we had some additional um, just in keeping the older fleet running, so. The other ones were smaller, uniform allowance and uh, out of class pay. It was just um, we didn't have it, we didn't have it in the right area of the budget where we showed up, so we fixed that for uh, for this year's budget.
Great. And you guys don't have any questions? I don't see anyone. Go for a peek. Thank you, Greg.
His salary for the Brookside Cemetery.
Mayor?
Um, yeah, just uh, it's more maintenance, both Brookside and um, I've got the name of the other one, and Main Street. Uh, two years ago, we um, had some uh, challenges with the cemetery um, board commission. Um, and exactly what our perpetual care amount was as well as overall fees for upkeep. Um, myself, the then treasurer and John Mason were named on the advice of council to be in control of that. Um, parking lot, especially um, Sam, had that assignment to figure that out. And at the end, we were short in the interim. Uh, we do have applicants that I'm putting forward uh, for the second, I mean, for the cemetery uh, commission to have a a hand a month on. And again, that's a an example of keeping an eye on the bottom line and then letting that roll to third quarter and seeing that there's there's a gap. Um, and there was a need uh, for salary and not for anything uh, extraordinary or it's just that's what it took and we did not realize that.
Any concerns or have any questions? No, go for a peek.
Next one, I think, about school Medicare.
Um, I came for appropriation already for city Medicare and I was off a couple hundred dollars because there's school Medicare, I underestimated the balloon payment that is done in June with the teachers in Paris.
And you guys don't have any questions? No, go for a peek.
Um, well, uh, that also covers my questions about the Medicare tax, though I think we uh, that was just sort of just a hundred dollars off calculation. Um, so I think that's also, I'm prepared to make a motion, but um, any cause don't have any questions or comments before I I have a motion, consider uh, dinner.
That's, it was just a comment. Um, mildly concerned, right? There's, I think all of these have to do with not coming to council earlier when they knew that these expenses were happening or miscalculations. Um, and so just would hope that the various offices would be a little bit more um, I guess thorough in their checks. I mean, appreciate, I know there's a lot happening, a lot going on, a lot of pressure. You know, DPW alone, I realize, as you and using your words as an octopus and like all of these various things. Um, but yeah, we just hope that middle of July, we're not, and they're filling these last things and so just a little bit more um, possible today. I know you all are working together, but just a little bit more um, I'm checking those numbers.
In your name. Thank you, Vansman. Go for a saret.
I guess my only other question too, uh, was any of this affected by the sort of timing of certification of free cash in terms of and making do with what was maybe available via budgeted monies and anticipating that at some point because of how long it took, at some point we would need money, but because time went on and on and on, we had to figure out something for some of these, especially like the building maintenance. I mean, that's obvious. You have to do, you have to have the money somewhere. And there's more money in one place, you have to give it some reality, you can earn great money. But was did that factor in? Look, in other words, if we had more free cash to the to the counselor's point, would we have been in a better position to anticipate those appropriations of earlier?
Um, that would be a great thing to be able to say, but it's often true. Um, and my policy of pushing and before this council, uh, was saying, we're gonna take this much money out of the catch as we can and put it in stabilization. So you know, not just technically, the the proof of the point is, the money that maybe would be in that free cash we purposely shifted into stabilization to have use of it over the summer. Um, again, truth be told, um, we did not anticipate. So we took this out of reserve. It's not really affected by free cash. It's really and and the timing of it, it's more watching line by line instead of balancing the bottom. That that really it's and and surely, um, we could have done that. You know, when I say we, mayor and my decisions, um, but it's not a deep driving through the budget, whether you understand it or not. It's simple math. You see that we spent it out line items and we're filling it with free cash, which is extra money from a line item and not the budget that we passed. Um, and at the last minute, and I feel I'm saying this more for the public, at at the last minute, you know, to to be able to do this under MGL, uh, I appreciate it. I think every year we'll have some of these things. Ninety three thousand dollars is the plan is it's an anomaly. Um, and the the reason for this, you know, that number going forward should really be something very, very, very uh, extraordinary. You know, like a storm or whatnot that that happens in June, like the first week of June. Uh, but if it happens in May, if it happens, there's plenty of time and and I, you know, I came back with a lot of appropriations at the last minute. Um, so tracking both on the department level um, and checking on the mayoral letter level, um, the expense reports, which we got drafts of every month, um, and not tracking that and not comparing that. Um, and seeing, you know, line four four zero zero point fifty two thirteen. Um, you guys pass eighteen thousand dollars. We spent that down in May and we covered it with some other money within that department, not going over above the bottom line and then not being able to cover it all by the end of the fiscal year, resulting in coming back for this at the last minute is exactly how that happens. I mean, again, if next year we'll, I probably be back with something similar, absolutely ninety three thousand dollars. So if that's the case, there is something really wrong. Like, we're not doing what we said to the council and the public.
Any other concern? If you want to take the motion. None, go for a peek.
Make the following request, the formal motion. The question is hereby made for approval of following appropriation requested. One hundred and twenty eight thousand, one hundred and eighty five dollars to be transferred from police incentive thirty five thousand dollars, reserve fund ninety three thousand, one hundred and eighty five dollars uh, to be transferred to computer part-time clerical salary, ten thousand, eighty dollars. Building ops, equipment, repairs and maintenance, ninety two thousand, one hundred sixty two thousand. Thank you. Uh, dispatch personnel services, sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Dispatch overtime, eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, building inspection, gas, plumbing, wire, four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Building inspection, temporary position, three thousand, fifty dollars. Uh, motor repairs salary, a hundred and ninety five dollars. Uh, motor repairs overtime, two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Motor repairs OOC, a hundred and twenty dollars. Motor repairs, uniform allowance, a hundred dollars. Brookside Cemetery salary, four thousand, fifteen dollars. School Medicare, five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Medicare tax, two hundred and sixty five dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to the end of fiscal year into the interdepartmental transfer of one hundred twenty eight thousand, one hundred eighty five dollars from police incentive and reserve funds to various city departments. Any further discussions? See none, put those on a favor.
Aye.
Any against abstention? Motion passes. Don't take a motion to adjourn.
Some work, some talking.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second to adjourn, those on the favor.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, everybody.